I will now call the August 1st Blue Springs City Council meeting order. If you would stand for me, observe a moment of silence, and I'll lead you into political allegiance. Are you pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? You may be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be hearing it later on cable TV. Next, we have a confirmation of a quorum.
Okay, if you just please state present when I state your name. Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Councilmember Levisay.
Present.
Councilmember Fowler.
Present.
Councilmember Erickson.
Present.
Councilmember Edmondson.
Present.
And Councilmember Culpepper.
Present.
Mayor Ross.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Next, we have the consent agenda unless their hours need to be full, except motion for approval.
Still moved.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Moving unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation. General, would you join us? One of our proud employees. Typically, I don't read these, but I'm always. Supply Commission City. Where is Jenna Herring, a self-taught artist and administrative assistant? I worked thirty-nine years at Hallmark Arts, and I never got some self-taught artist.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. She's an administrative assistant of Blue Springs Police Department. Yeah, chosen as an artist out of a parade of arts, and two of her designs were selected. And where the parade of arts of the public art experience be from original artwork and the shape of arts in the Kansas City region? The large hearts were placed to perhaps spark community engagement and conversation. Funds raised from the sale of the hearts built to support local organizations. And where Jenna's art show, her love of texture, vintage design, and honoring black history through creative expression. And where the Jenna's celebrated cultural arts was inspired by black culture and history. The salute to the Kansas City Monarchs art she designed is in honor of Sancho Page and the Kansas City Monarchs. And now, therefore, I caution all members of Blue Springs, the Blue Springs City Council, do hereby recognize and congratulate Jenna Herring for the parade of arts artwork, and do hereby proclaim Monday, August 1st, 2022, as Jenna Herring Day. All right.
You gotta do everything she says tonight.
Come on up here, yeah, come on family. You know, like slash. All right, here we go. Got it? All right, get me right there, then you're up. Let me shake your hand, too. But Jenna family, you don't have to sit through the rest of this unless you just want to. I want to let you know that. Okay, next, we have the introduction reading of Bill number 5004.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill number 5004, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Blue Springs, Missouri and Valley Oaks Investments LLC, Jeff Ganadin, Kevin Stucker, and Brent and Jennifer Nagel.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in both same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 5004, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Blue Springs, Missouri and Valley Oaks Investments LLC, Jeff Ganadin, Kevin Stucker, and Brent and Jennifer Nagel.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number 5136.
Next, we have the second reading of Bill number 4994.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Just the second reading.
Oh, second.
Motion to approve.
Second reading of Bill number 4994, an ordinance annexing forty-six point nine-two plus or minus acres of property located north of East Jefferson Road between Northwest Twentieth Street and Tire Road, three zero 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 two West Jefferson Road to the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number 5137.
Okay, this is, next, we're gonna have the first of several public hearings, so if anybody plans to testify, if you would stand and take the oath at this stand, so we're gonna have to do it individually.
Raise your hand, please. Do you saw me swear the testimony about giving this case?
All right, and so when you come up, then you can state your name and your address when you get ready to testify. Okay. Public hearing on All About the Outdoors.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated July 26, 2022 with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 9, 2022, one hundred eighty-five-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of site, copy of said letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving the general development plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Staff report on behalf of the city.
Adair Bright, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. Before you this evening is a request for a general development plan amendment for All About the Outdoors, a proposed indoor and outdoor storage facility to be located on approximately sixteen point seven acres at the southeast corner of Northwest Seventh Highway and Argos Road. The site has a previously approved general development plan for All About the Outdoors, but the applicant has since stated that the site layout before you tonight will work better with the topography. The site will have one point of access off of Northwest Seventh Highway, and the applicant will be installing a five-foot ADA compliant sidewalk along the Seventh Highway frontage. The site meets all development standards for the general industrial building type, including setbacks, building coverage, and building height. The site has required sixty-three parking spaces based off the proposed use, and the applicant intends to provide those sixty-three spaces that will also double as outdoor storage. There are a total of three hundred and eleven internal storage units and one hundred and twenty-three external storage bays. The applicant is hoping to be able to relocate the existing cemetery plot, but if that is not feasible, it shall be preserved and protected in its entirety and shall be identified in the site plan design review. There's a white vinyl fence proposed along the Northwest Seventh Highway frontage to help buffer any exterior storage, and the fencing around the rest of the site is proposed to be chain link with slats, as shown in the picture. There have been no requested modifications to the UDC. The conceptual site plan includes the eighteen different buildings and three outdoor storage areas, which will be developed in two phases. Exterior building materials include metal in the building adjacent to Northwest Seventh Highway are all proposed to have EFS wainscoting. The architectural design and materials meet the minimum non-residential design standards and will be reviewed greater detail with the site plan design review process. A conceptual landscaping plan has also been provided. With buffering, parking lot landscaping, and open space landscaping, the site is required to have a total of two thousand one hundred and sixty plant units. Staff reviewed the general development plan application and finds that their request meets the review criteria. The proposed development is compatible with the character of the area and is not expected to generate a large increase in noise or traffic. Planning Commission held a public hearing on Monday, July 25, and recommended approval with five ayes and one nay. Staff recommends approval of the general development plan with eight conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, I'm just curious to know on this map where that cemetery was at.
Yes, so...
And I assume this is laid out as if it's moving?
Yes, yes. So it's in this square here.
Okay, so it's not really that large, then?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Me? The white vinyl fence?
Mm-hmm.
And then the other one is black chain link with slats?
Yes.
Is there, is there, in the code, would chain link fence with slats satisfy the density requirement? Or does it need to be the full density like vinyl?
So we don't have a requirement for that since it's adjacent to the same zoning district. It's actually not required any kind of buffering along those edges. So what they're proposing will meet all requirements.
Okay, so I could, saying this, I could hint that white, that chain link with slats might look better than white vinyl?
Yeah.
Okay, I just hinted that.
Anyone else? Councilmember Levisay?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, do you, can you remind me what we did in the neighborhood developments on South Seventh Highway? Was that white vinyl, was that stone? I don't remember what those were.
Those were proposed to be solid masonry fences, so they did concrete panels.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
I would like to go back to where that cemetery or the grave. Did we ever find out how many actual people are?
I will leave that to the applicant. I know they mentioned at Planning Commission that they did some additional research on it, so.
Okay, so when they, when they come up, we can ask them that? And I would also have to go along with Councilman Member Erickson on the, I'd like to see the six-foot chain link black with the slats in it myself, instead of plastic.
Okay. And I would imagine, to make it official, once we actually get into the ordinance itself, staff, councilmember, you can probably make an amendment to require that. Right, City Attorney? That could be a condition. If the council so choose.
Yes, you can add that to the ordinance.
Okay, got that, Councilmember? Make note of that.
That's great.
Anyone else? Before we go to the developer or the applicant? Okay, the applicant want to come up and make or answer any questions and make any comments? And state your address and all, and that you've been sworn in.
My name is Donnie Swart. I live at 16114 West 165th Street in Olathe, Kansas, and I am the property owner.
Okay.
And I've been sworn in.
Is there anything that you would add that the staff report didn't include or stand for questions?
I'm just here to answer questions you might have.
Okay, any questions from the council? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. The, I think one of the neighboring properties, and staff may need to correct me if wrong, maybe this has been taken out, but Pike Metals, I think, does some testing out there of rupture discs. You're familiar with that?
Yes, yes, I am.
And there can be quite a boom come out of there, shattering effect. Does that give you any pause for this project, or?
No, it does not.
Okay, okay, just wanted to hear that, thank you.
Councilmember Michaela?
Your Honor, would you be the one to ask the question of, did we find out?
Yes.
About the cemetery?
So the gravestone has four names on it. The last person to be buried there was buried in, I believe, nineteen oh seven, something like that. So, yeah, there's just four.
And is that an accurate location where that is on the? Because at one time, it seemed like in the planning or something, I thought it was in between the two buildings.
Well, we made some changes to the location of the buildings to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing, make sure that the space was better allocated.
Okay, so if we moved it, where would it?
So I reached out to a couple funeral homes, and the funeral home reached out to Jackson County, and the person in Jackson County contacted me, and they're currently doing some research to see what it's gonna take to get it moved, or if it's feasible or not. So rest assured that whatever the outcome is, I'm going to do everything that is by the book, so.
So if you have to move it, would it, would it stay in the area where you're at? Or would be going offsite somewhere else?
I was thinking, I would probably move to an actual cemetery.
Okay, all right.
So.
Thank you.
And also, just want to add that the cemetery is part of Phase Two, so it'll probably be a couple years before that piece of property gets developed.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions, Councilmember?
And me.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question on, I know you planned on doing this in phasing. How's your security gonna be, other than just a gate code, that type of thing? Are you gonna have cameras on sites with this type of stories that you're suggesting? They can be prone to being, you know, broke into a lot, so.
Yeah, so I'm going to have security fencing around. I have lots of cameras. I also am going to speak with the police department, let them know that, or offer them a code to get in, and police the property as well, if they ever want to or need to.
So are you gonna use a service to monitor the cameras? Or is that something your office or? Because I don't think, I think you remembered, you said you didn't have an office on site.
So my website is going to have the camera feeds. So and then all of the clients can access the camera feeds at any time. And then it will be recorded as well.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Councilwoman Culpepper, did you have?
No, I was concerned about the cemetery, because you made a statement in here that if you couldn't move it, you would change a building layout in order to preserve it. That I just want to make sure that happened.
Yes, yes, we will, we will adjust the plans, make sure that it's...
It just seems strange to have all this stored buildings in a single gravestone.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that it's properly preserved and won't, I guess, for lack of a better term, freak out the tenants.
Councilmember Levisay?
I was just gonna ask, the discussion with the fencing, would you have any problem with the chain link with the slats? Is there a reason you chose the vinyl, just looking for some feedback?
So that fencing along Seventh Highway is gonna be over a gas easement, which means we won't be able to build anything permanent like a masonry fence or anything like that. So my original plan was to do the chain link and the slats. And the, it was determined that maybe we should go with the vinyl instead.
But you don't have a preference either?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Real quickly?
Yeah.
You said it was determined, I don't follow that. Was that you determined that, or the gas company said that you needed to do that?
The Planning Commission said that they would, they would rather see the plastic fence.
Well, I've, I don't care whether it's plastic or not, I just don't like white. When you drive by, it's just like, okay, look at me. That's why I would prefer to have some darker, something that would fit in with the terrain better, whether it's plastic or vinyl slats or whatever it is, so. And then the pipeline, I trust that's all the codes or whatever they require is satisfying.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah. Yeah, just to clarify on the vinyl fence, that was a discussion that staff had had with the applicant, and that was a request from staff to put in a opaque fence so that it would better screen the outdoor storage areas, especially the middle portion that runs along the gas easement from view from Seventh Highway, and then also in the northwest corner next to the detention pond. There were previously buildings running along the entire frontage along Seventh Highway, which would have prevented any real views into the property from Seventh Highway. So in order to help protect that view, staff suggested a opaque fence, such as a vinyl fence, to help better protect the kind of visual corridor along Seventh Highway.
Yes, it is a opaque, sorry, my bad.
Okay.
So the, if you put those slats, I've seen those in the slats break after about three years, and you have this disarray.
Yeah, there's fence maintenance requirements that would fall to a code enforcement issue. Also with the slats, as you can see in that picture in the middle, there is some translucency of that. You can still see through it. It is not a, even with a chain link fence with a wind mesh screen, as we've seen on some properties in the city, and with the vinyl slats, there's, there's the ability to see through it as well. So that's why we recommended more of an opaque, solid fence, whether it be, you know, vinyl, I think, has a better appearance over time versus wood, because especially if there's an irrigation system, then the wood can sometimes get that kind of ring on it from the sprinklers hitting it. But that was our suggestion, is some sort of opaque fence to help with the screening along Seventh Highway.
Which, to me, seems more appropriate. You don't want people to drive through by and see we have that in another area right now where things are being stored, and you can actually look through. And so I would prefer not to be able to have that visual.
Okay.
Can I ask Mike another question then? Do you care, does staff care, that whether it's white or whether it blends with the environment? You know, whether it's green or...
We would, I mean, no, not necessarily. I mean, I don't, I don't think there'd be any problem at all in, depending on the color of the buildings, of doing something of a similar shade that wasn't white. I don't, I don't know if the applicant would have an issue with that at all.
Camouflage of some sort, probably is the term I'm looking for, but I don't...
That more blends and is compatible with the colors of the buildings. I think that would, staff would certainly be okay with that. This is what the applicant proposed, and staff said, you know, we were okay with that idea because we were more concerned with the opaqueness. But the color of the fence, I think this is more of a, just an example of what it could look like. I don't know if it's necessarily, was determined that it would be a white vinyl. That's what the picture shows. It was more to determine what the material would be, and it would be a solid fence. So if council, similarly to, if council wanted to put a condition of approval in that it have chain link with slats along Seventh Highway, I think council could make a condition that said, we'd like to keep the vinyl, but have it be a color similar to the building colors.
Anybody else before?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Don't we have that on the south side here? The police station has a black fence?
The masonry. On the south side, we did the masonry part.
On the south side, we're going up Walnut, don't we have a chain link fence with the slats?
Oh, that I don't know.
Yeah. I seen that. Okay.
But I think the main issue, the staff's recommendation, is we want it solid rather than see-through. And the color really doesn't matter, as long as it blends in. Okay. All right, well, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to the public, and the one who wants to like speaking support of, support of, opposition to, opposition to. Bring it back up here in the last part and comments before I close this public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill number 5005?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 5005, an ordinance approving the general development plan for All About the Outdoors.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes, sir. Do, when is it proper to ask that the fence be something that blends with the environment? Could that be now? Is that an amendment then? Then I would propose that we amend the suggested white vinyl fence as presented to be an opaque fence that staff approves, that is matching of the environment somehow.
Blended? That would blend?
That would blend with the environment, thank you.
Okay.
Your Honor, can I ask him a question?
Uh, he, let's, we'll go to discussion, I have a second.
Second on amendment? Go ahead and second it, so we discuss.
Okay, we have a second on amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a second on amendment now, we can have a discussion.
So what's your definition of opaque?
Of what?
Of the color.
Did you say the definition of opaque?
Yeah.
I think Mr. Mallon would refer to opaque as something you can't see through, and I'm saying that something that would blend with the environment.
And what color would that be? Because that leaves a broad section.
Anything but white, most likely, or pink, or red, or something that draws your eye to it. I think it's a, it's a common sense idea to look at it that way. I can't choose the color. If you want me to choose the color, I'd say choose the color of the trees around it.
Well, I think, I think with your amendment, we're gonna leave it with the discretion of staff.
Sure.
Okay, you had a motion to have a second, we have some discussion. All in favor of amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Aye.
No? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Levisay?
No.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Amendment passes with a vote of four to three, with Councilmembers Edmondson, Kayler, and Levisay voting no.
Okay, second reading. Oh, oh, we need to vote on the first, vote on the first one as amended. Okay, motion to approve it, first reading as amended. Is a motion?
Salute.
Your second.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna have any further discussion on that. If not, we're going to, well, let's just roll call it again.
All right, Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilmember Kayler?
Okay, aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, second reading.
Second reading of Bill number 5005 as amended, an ordinance approving the general development plan for All About the Outdoors.
Your Honor, move the bill as amended be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously and given ordinance number 5138.
Have another public hearing on Double C Industries.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City, City Council information form dated July 26, 2022 with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 9, 2022, one hundred eighty-five-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of site, copy of said, of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, bill approving the rezoning, bill approving the conditional use permit, and bill approving the general development plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Next, we have staff for our matters.
Adair Bright, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. The next item on the agenda are requests for a rezoning, conditional use permit, and general development plan with alternative development standards for Double C Industries at 1400 Southeast US 40 Highway. The subject property is located just south of US 40 Highway and about six hundred feet west of Adams Derry Parkway. The first request is for a rezoning from heavy industrial Adams Derry Parkway overlay to light industrial Adams Derry Parkway overlay. The rezoning is required since heavy industrial zoning is not allowed in the Adams Derry Parkway overlay, and when a site changes use or has a development proposal, the zoning must come into compliance. The second request is for a conditional use permit for the existing manufacturing general use on the property. The land use is allowed by right in the light industrial zoning district, but since the property is in the Adams Derry Parkway overlay, all light industrial uses must get a conditional use permit. The final request is for a general development plan. The applicant is proposing to add a 5,000-square-foot metal building with the intent of using it as storage. The building is proposed to go in the last bit of open space on the site. There is a conceptual landscaping plan provided, but most of the site is considered legal non-conforming. The applicant has requested alternative development standards because the site would have to be drastically changed in order to come into compliance with the current UDC. The modifications include requesting a waiver from the forty percent open space requirement in the Adams Derry Parkway overlay, requesting to waive the sidewalk width requirement for sidewalks leading to a building entrance, and requesting to waive landscaping requirements where no further development is proposed. Staff supports the request because the zoning is becoming less intensive and the adjacent properties are developed in similar ways. If all three applications are approved, the applicant will be required... the applicant will be required to preliminary and final plat the site along with a site plan design review application to finalize site specifics. Planning commission held a public hearing on Monday, July twenty-fifth, and recommended unanimous approval of all three applications. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions, and approval of the general development plan with two conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay. Is applicant present? Applicant gonna come identify himself? He's already been sworn in.
John Hefner, I have been sworn in. I'm from Grain Valley, Missouri. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council?
I suppose.
Well, I, oh, you got one because you're about to hit my easy button.
Yeah, yeah. I guess this new building had, what's gonna be its function would have?
It's material storage.
Just material storage?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
We'll go to the public. Anyone who wants to like to speak in support of? Support of, opposition two, opposition two. Questions, comments before I close this public hearing? Seeing none, close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce bill number five zero zero six?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number five zero zero six, in ordinance approving rezoning property from heavy industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay to light industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay for Double C Industries.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Second reading of bill number five zero zero six, in ordinance approving rezoning property from heavy industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay to light industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay for Double C Industries.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five one three nine.
Next, we have an introductory reading of bill number five zero zero seven.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number five zero zero seven, in ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow manufacturing general in the light industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay zoning district.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I wanted to ask this question earlier, but I wasn't sure how to ask the question. May I go back and ask staff a question? You mentioned that the property matched the adjacent properties? Are the adjacent properties in, are we gonna see another? Do they all match or they all zoned right and they all fit in the overlay and all that?
No, they're not all zoned appropriately. They are all in the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay. Um, just across the street at six oh one Southeast Industrial, they recently rezoned, I believe two weeks ago, to light industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay. We won't see the others rezone until they probably come forward with a land use change or development proposal. I was saying it's gonna be developed in a similar way and the fact that the site is gonna be laid out in a similar way.
So, so then is it fair to say that the matching is a non-compliant match? Or is there, are there?
Yes, those are all legal non-conforming uses that are heavy industrial in the Adams Dairy Parkway.
So they are matching a non-conforming use?
No, they're gonna start to match the conforming use and the development pattern, they're gonna be non-conforming.
What we have here would be a conforming use? Because you said it matched the others and then the others are non-conforming. So this will be conforming if the others were conformed?
Yes, the use will be conforming, the site development will not, if that makes sense.
If it does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, we're on. First reading? Okay, any other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Second reading of bill number five zero zero seven, in ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow manufacturing general in the light industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay zoning district.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five one four zero.
Next, we have an introductory reading of bill number five zero zero eight.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number five zero zero eight, in ordinance approving the general development plan for Double C Industries.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Second reading of bill number five zero zero eight, in ordinance approving the general development plan for Double C Industries.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five one four one.
Next, we have another public hearing on the community development block grant, twenty twenty-two, twenty through twenty-six.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two with the following attachments. Affidavit of publication in the examiner on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Resolution approving the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six consolidated plan. Resolution approving the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual action plan. Resolution approving the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and resolution approving the citizen participation plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Staff report.
Good evening, Shana Kelly, nine oh three West Main Street, and I have already been sworn in. Before you this evening, our separate request for the approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six CDBG consolidated plan, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty twenty-six citizen participation plan, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-six analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three CDBG annual action plan. All four documents are the result of a series of public hearings held by the CDBG advisory committee in May and June, followed by a thirty-day public comment period from June eighteenth through July nineteenth of this year in which drafts of all four plans were published. The consolidated plan covers the five-year period beginning October first, twenty twenty-two and ends on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The consolidated plan provides the framework for planning processes used by the city to identify housing, homeless, community, and economic development needs identified through the planning process, as well as goals approved with the assessment of fair housing. The city is proposing five goals to guide the use of CDBG funds for the next five-year period, which are as follows. Reinvesting in downtown and existing neighborhoods, providing assistance for first-time homebuyers, support public services for low to moderate income persons and areas, support affordable housing, affordable and accessible housing, and lastly, support administration and planning. The citizen participation plan also covers the five-year period beginning October first, twenty twenty-two and outlines the city's policies and procedures for citizen participation and development of the consolidated plan, the annual action plan, the review of performance reports, and the review of substantial amendments to any other approved plans. The twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan covers the one-year period beginning October first, twenty twenty-two, and ends on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The annual action plan describes the specific CDBG programs and activities that the city will undertake during the program year. The city has received a twenty twenty-two allocation of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The city has one, one hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents in pre-twenty twenty funds and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars in program income, which is left over from grant repayments, to be real, reallocated for a total program of four hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-six cents. The city is proposing to expend the total program on the following activities, all of which are a continuation of previously approved programs. So starting with minor home repair program, ninety-five thousand. First-time home buyers program, twenty-four thousand dollars. Field house recreation passes, two thousand dollars. Commercial facade grant program, twenty-five thousand dollars. Hope House support, twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety. Community service league support, twenty-five thousand. Sidewalk improvements program, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents. And program administrations, fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty cents. So that totals the four hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-six cents. Public input was gathered during public hearings held by the CDBG advisory committee, as well as during the thirty-day public comment period held between June eighteenth and July nineteenth. No public input was received during this time. The CDBG advisory committee recommended approval of all four plans, including the proposed allocation of funds presented this evening. Staff also recommends approval of all four plans. These final plans adopted by resolution must be submitted to HUD no later than August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two for review and, and approval by October first, twenty twenty-two. And I will stand for any questions.
Councilmember Val.
Yes, Your Honor. I guess thanks to the committee for putting all this together and all the work staff did to it. I'm not proposing any changes, but there is something maybe I want to ask. And relative to the minor home repair program, do we have a maximum of like five thousand or something like that on that application for each minor home repair?
For each.
Is that regulated by CDBG or? The reason I'm asking is it's been like that for many, many years and I just don't think you can do the same amount of minor home repair in five thousand dollars you used to be able to do. So is that something we can look at?
That is not regulated by CDBG. That was a number that we proposed and it has been the same for many years. So that is something we can consider.
I just asked the committee to review that for next year and see if it doesn't warrant a higher level.
Your Honor, if, I can kind of, if you don't mind me, answer part of that question. It's got to do with the regulations that HUD puts on it. And if you get over that amount, there's a lot more regulation that has to be submitted. Paperwork requirements, because we've suggested that as a committee. Last three years, I believe, we talked about bringing it up. Well, maybe two years, I'm sorry, last two years. Just due to the fact of inflation and the cost of materials and stuff had gone up so heavily. But it, it wouldn't be, to go up with it, it really would be more of a burden on the applicant. Matter of fact, it'd be a tremendous burden on the applicant. The federal government tends to do that sometimes. And that's why it's stuck at the five thousand. So I'd love to see it go up and, and some other council members would be too.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. That is, that is a requirement. We can go above that amount, but it does require a lot more work and quite frankly, it may not be worth it for the applicant themselves, so.
Councilmember Levisay?
Thanks for that feedback.
I have a similar question about the first-time home buyers program. I know in the past we've discussed cutting it altogether because it doesn't seem to have been utilized. Has that been better utilized in the last couple of years? Is it still leaving money on the table? Where is that process?
It is. It has not been, it has not been historically well utilized, to be honest. And I, I don't know why that is. It might be lack of knowledge that, I don't know that it's because there isn't a need for it. I just, I don't know if, I don't know if everyone is aware of the programs.
I feel like we continually talk about cutting that program. I would almost just rather make the proposal and see where we are. And maybe it's better in the committee process. But I feel like every year we say, well, next year, let's look at cutting that. So maybe that's five more minor home repairs that we could offer and just cut the program altogether since it doesn't really seem to be used regularly.
Well, Your Honor, one of the things that we talked about in the committee was the same situation. But we felt like part of the issue was we weren't getting the word out. And we talked about better ways to let the community know that these funds are available and that is something that we tasked staff with doing and looking at social media and such to get the word out.
I'm comfortable letting that float another year. I guess I would just say, let's try the messaging approach and put it on the notes for next year, then maybe it's worth cutting next year. We've talked about it several years, I know, so.
Anyone else? Councilmember Edmondson?
Also, to echo what Councilman Culpepper said, part of that is also too that the market has changed to where those first-time home buyers are also competing with out-of-state people that are coming in and snatching up stuff to, as an investment and turn around for rental property. And that, that kind of plays in with it too. And while we're on the topic, there has, we talked about trying to improve or even up the support for Hope House and Community Service League. There was, there's, that's restricted by a certain percentage of the total goes into those deals. And so what we tried to do now is there's a set amount that community service gets and then the balance would go towards Hope House. And so that's why it's kind of an odd number of the twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. So that was something that was done different this year than, than what you have done in the past.
Any other comments? All right. Good, thank you. Since this is a public hearing, we go to all the people out there in the public. Is there anyone who wants to like to speak in support of? Support of, opposition two, opposition two. Close this public hearing. So we're gonna have several resolutions and all I need is a motion, a second, and ask for approval.
I will make that.
Well, you don't even have to introduce it.
I will make that motion.
Okay, yeah, motion to approve resolution sixty-one dash twenty twenty-two. So you made the motion. Is there a second?
Right.
In discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.